We're ready. Okay, six o'clock, call the meeting to order. Kyle.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yeah.
Lee.
Yeah.
Greg. Ginger.
Here.
Uh, do I motion approve the consent agenda? Kevin, do I have a second?
How second that?
Ginger. Take role, Kyle.
Yeah.
Kevin.
Yeah.
Lee.
Yeah.
Ginger.
Yes.
Okay, motion to discuss the possible action to approve the direction to proceed with the property to two twelve East Jones. So there was a letter in the packet from the attorney. It's like the third, third page.
First. Motion.
Yeah, it's all in the motion, but like the third page is the one actually from Doug.
So do I understand it correctly that a, the expiration date has come from when someone had already bought the tax certificate?
I don't know, not yet, because it was, I think it was just sold.
Well, that, that page, it says June nineteenth of twenty twenty-three, the.
Oh, yes.
Was sold at a.
Yes.
Certificate of purchase was issued by the treasurer to some, I don't know, company.
G C D one seventy-nine L L C.
And I Googled them and they have a lot of that stuff. And I could be wrong, but I gather that that company has the opportunity to sell that property now if they want to and if we wanna buy it or if someone else wants to buy it.
Well, once, once the time is up and nobody has done anything, then they take ownership eventually, but I don't know what that timeframe is. Does it say in here, Terry?
Yeah, it did. I seen that. Uh, it might be in the letter he wrote.
Uh, renegotiate with the tax sales certificate holder.
That's if we wanted to take it over to keep our liens and.
So don't they have to pay us for what, the money? Didn't that guy get fined like six thousand dollars?
He was supposed to have, and then he was found in contempt, er, it was supposed to be like, I think sixty-five hundred dollars. The judge put it down to fifteen hundred dollars and then he had so much time to fix all the deficiencies, but he didn't. And then I thought Doug went back and said he hasn't done anything, so the judge enacted the full sixty-five hundred dollars. Now, I don't think that's been paid yet.
I didn't see anything.
Cause I, I believe he has to pay it to the court and then the court to us.
Like the biggest question. You want to buy the money, they've got sold, or is that just because it was, um, through the taxes or what?
So basically, the gist that I'm getting for this is that he obviously didn't pay his taxes, so it went on the tax sale and then that company bought it.
Well, in town on the, oh, it's that, you notice to redeem from tax, they all clear on the second page at the bottom. It just says, in the note. Um, the only means by which you may redeem this property is your payment of the amount due from the Jones County Treasurer. And current amount owed according to interest to the tax sales certi- certificate holders two thousand seventy-four.
So if we want, so basically what this is saying is if we wanted to approach the people that bought it, we could transfer that certificate to our name. And it'd make it easier for us to then take the property.
But the question was if we could get it bought for three thousand or less, are we willing to do it? But then there's gonna be a lot of other expenses.
But what, what do we want the property for?
Well, we'll clean it up and we can sell it.
We sell the lot, basically what you're saying.
We could sell the lot as is with the understanding, if we don't tear it down right away, if we put it up for sale, we could sell it. Basically, to our cost with the understanding they have to either fix it or demo it.
No one's gonna wanna fix that anyway.
Probably not, it's been empty too long.
And we'll never get our money back.
Even, even though they did fix that one in Baldwin that's had empty for twenty years.
Has anybody done any, just out of curiosity, what would it cost the city to tear that thing down and haul it out?
I'm guessing probably five or six thousand dollars.
And the lot, and the lot valuation is what? Just the lot?
I don't know the last time we've actually sold a lot in town.
The first thing I'd like to do is both sides' properties, we got two property owners on each side, ask them first if they're, that way, don't cost us nothing. Say, are you willing to buy this property? If we, if we went through the paperwork and the steps to get it for the, under the three thousand boom, reimburse the city for that, give them.
Under condition, so.
Give them X amount of time to clean it up and tear it after, if one of the property owners wants it, they got a timetable to clean it up.
If, does that make us the middle person? Can we just be?
We, we wouldn't be, if we did this, we still have to wait a period of time and I don't know what the period of time is before we can actually take legal control.
But do we gotta list it townwide or can you go to the jointing property owners first?
I think it'd be like in, but it's, it's, you'd have to do a public notice and put it up for sale that way. You wouldn't have to advertise it in the paper, I don't think, you'd just have to.
I mean, we could get into it for ten grand real quick.
If we to, if we ended up tearing it down, yes, we could.
I mean, if we're gonna buy it, you can't leave it standing.
So what happens if we don't do nothing, the, the company stays control of it?
The gist that I'm getting is that we will, we could lose. I think it said what had happened if we didn't.
I kinda gathered that if we don't act upon it, somebody else has the ability to do so.
It does say though.
They still gotta clean it up.
It does say that in here though, um, the tax sales certificate holders are usually open to this if they can be convinced that they do not want the property. That is a nuisance or other problem property in that they take ownership, they will be expected to bring the property into compliance and or may face civil enforcement action.
Like I said, they still gotta clean it up with it.
Right, then they would have to clean it.
Somebody has to.
Yeah, somebody has to clean it up.
They haven't yet, I mean, the owners don't look like they're too concerned about it, I mean.
If I was living next to that, I'd wanna buy it.
I would too.
I mean, if you could get it.
Suzanne and Brad Lloyd.
That's not Smokey, dude.
Wanna buy it Suzanne?
If I knew somebody that could take it down, I might be interested, but I don't.
We could get some prices, I mean, right here in town, that would, I mean, keep it local, I mean, Teddy Bear does a lot of that stuff. He just removed the house up there.
Yep.
Hmm, I own the lot behind, I own the, they gave.
The alley, right.
And you fill it all in and, I mean, like I said, Steve Dirk's moved that one up on the hill, so he's gonna know exactly within a buck what it's gonna cost him. We could get you.
You gotta tear or knock it down, you gotta haul it away, or can you burn it?
He hauled everything away up on the hill.
One of the things that you might be able to do is you might be able to let the fire department practice.
Unless there's asbestos in it.
Right.
Day long. I don't think we can do that now with the, there's too many buildings close to it that. We've turned, we've turned some other stuff down already and that, I'm just.
Right. Or the, uh, just like, uh, the house kitty corner from the fire station, you know, the, the J Cert team or whatever. You know, they used it for a bit before it got tore down as to make entries and, you know, practice bad guys being in the house and stuff like that.
I can get all the cost on the teardown before the next meeting, if we can, we ain't gonna do nothing right now anyway, right?
Well, that's, we either need to, no, we could, I mean, if you guys want to, we could pursue getting it tonight, that's why it's on the agenda.
I don't wanna, and we're stuck with it if somebody else don't want it.
Just know that I hate the city to be a real, be in real estate, but I also get the fact that it needs to go.
We're gonna have to maintain the property and all that there if we're stuck with it.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
If you look at the beacon map, it looks like it's sitting right on the property. On Brian's side, not on my side.
And that alley in the back splits everything, right? Between Mike's and, it runs.
Mine runs to about the edge of Mike's building, I believe.
Two foot off the building.
Laptop.
The state or the pins are in back there, I seen, I mean, I've seen them a lot of times, so, it's, yeah, like you said, it's right up.
It was, yeah, Ellen had, we had it surveyed before we built the new house.
Well, if you can get it brought up on the television, please do, so then everybody can look.
Uh, Brenna said a lot of times these beacons.
It's off a few feet.
Yeah, it's, it even puts a disclaimer up there that it's not legal.
Well, it doesn't matter, it's right on Brian's or not, it's been there for a hundred years, so can't move that.
Well, yeah, cause it belonged to the Hamilton family.
Right.
Back in the past, so.
You don't have to worry about it, Terry.
And we can't move the house, so it doesn't matter.
If it's on the property ladder. We go buying that property, how many other people are gonna want us to buy their property? Oh, you bought that one?
Well, by having it here at the meeting, it's now out in the public that that spot is available for purchase from tax certificate, maybe interested parties will reach out and purchase it on their own. That way the city is not involved.
Because I don't build a, I mean, he just moved one, so you're gonna know within a couple bucks what it costs.
Yeah, I, I'd have to touch base with my daughters before I made any decision like that.
But I mean, we'd be able to get, we'd be able to get some numbers together for the, both sides of the property owner, so they know what it's gonna cost to tear it down and level it.
The purchase price on that would be, would be what, the fifteen hundred or the?
Three thousand. No, no, it's the two thousand, if you could get it bought for the two thousand seventy-four plus a hundred dollars, so it'd be twenty-one seventy-four.
And possibly some other miscellaneous costs, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's always that.
But that's the minor part, it's the, buying that's nothing, it's the teardown and everything else.
That's what I was getting, to get bought right then, it makes it more, makes it like more cost efficient to knock it down, is all I'm getting at.
Yeah, it does.
Get a whole choreography too, if you tear your stuff down, if you got a big semi dump box.
I mean, you could just talk to one and get an, get a estimate for, if you wanna table it till, till the next meeting, we can do that, but Terry and I kinda thought maybe we should have a discussion about it, that's why we had the meeting tonight.
I mean, we can't really, we either gotta say yay or nay to buy it tonight, basically.
We could probably do it next.
I just have it as a motion on here, cause I think if you're gonna buy it, you gotta.
We could do it in April, the April meeting, we should still have time.
I'll make a motion, we table it and I'll get the cost of remove it. What would it cost to tear it down? We get two different quotes.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'll go along with that, I'll second that.
Okay. Take role, Kyle.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yeah.
Lee.
Yeah.
Ginger.
Yes.
So we missed that deadline, but it's also based on trail projects. We don't have any trail projects. So.
I did talk to Derek one day and he did mention about that trail project, but he says there's ways to have, I think this is what he meant, there's other ways around it to make it be like a trail? I don't know exactly.
He says right here that he could, I'm working on a couple of things that might meet that requirement.
Just wanna wait till fall.
I have a feeling though that without a trail, it's not going to matter, so.
I would like to see us throw it out there and have Derek see if he can't find a way to work around the trail item, cause that's ten thousand dollars worth of free money right there if you get the grant, worse than telling us is no.
Yeah, and you gotta use towards that. That, that's whatever you guys wanna do, if you wanna look to try to buy something or if you just wanna. Cause I did a little looking tonight before we came. Kaminga's had a used one that had. It's thirty-nine hundred miles on it. I found another one.
What's the price of that one, thirty nine?
Oh, sorry.
End of year.
That was a two thousand eight, they wanted sixty-nine hundred dollars for it. It's got doors and stuff on it. It has the windshield in the back, but it does not have doors. It's a two thousand eight, has, like I said, thirty-nine hundred miles on it. It's a Ranger seven hundred.
Let's see that one, pictures two hundred, I don't know what that looks like, but.
Terry, from a budgeting standpoint, what can we afford to spend for something like that?
I'll have to look at that. Let me, let me look at that.
Cause that makes a lot of difference, what, what we can, what we should look at.
I wrote that on my sheet.
I've been looking under ten for used, see, and, and there was, uh, what is this place? Worthington Brunken, they have a twenty-seventeen Pioneer five hundred coming in for forty-five hundred bucks, but they don't have no information. There was a twenty-eighteen Polaris Ranger five hundred with no glass, no nothing. They had twelve hundred miles on it for eight.
Do you wanna know what the Pioneers look like down there? Bogies, Kevin Bogies sits out all the time, that's what the Pioneers are.
I haven't even seen one.
Sitting out in his driveway all the time, it's.
I'll be darned.
I mean, the only, the only other crazy thought that I had, since they're really not doing much with it, what if we just get a golf cart?
I think they're about the same price, so.
No, they're not.
Aren't they?
No. Um. We bought a, ours is a twenty-one. Club car, we give. Less than four grand for it. Then we put, we spent the, the dump box, three hundred dollars and put the, you know, the, took the.
The back thing.
The back off and put the seat with the deck on it, so, cause we use it over the fairgrounds all the time. Maybe it's less than that, but we bought it, uh, Stacey has a cousin that works it, their owns, uh, the one in front of them.
No matter who you're talking to.
Cause basically what we're doing is talking about letting them run around town with it.
Well, if you had a dump box on the back of it.
You could dump, right.
And also there's a weight issue too, I think there's probably a four by four, I mean, side by side would have a more weight than.
It would, yeah, it would.
If we have to haul bags of coal mix or something like that, coal pack.
Just throwing it out there.
Side by side would be more year round and golf cart would be seasonal.
Yeah, yeah, you'd have about eight months.
But I'd really like to know, quite frankly, what our budget dictates, and then, then we look within whatever our budget would dictate.
Well, sh, the one day when Cherry was here, we talked about it and she said that we could probably use the money we got from the, uh, the rebate on the insurance.
Oh, that insurance, what was that, ten, what was that, eleven thousand?
Eleven thousand dollars. So, you know, cause you could just buy the machine, you could buy the side by side if it doesn't have doors on it and stuff, you put that stuff on later. You sure could. I don't care, I mean, it was just brought up in conversation, so just whatever you guys wanna do.
I thought Rob was gonna find a list of them for us or?
He's been looking a little bit too, but I don't think he's had much luck.
He said he didn't know a lot about it, me neither.
I, I just know that there's a couple of them that everybody has and they seem to be pretty reliable, like the Polaris's and the Canhams.
Yes.
I mean.
Bransley, I think too, that you wanna stick.
I mean, the, the Kawasaki mule does pretty good, but they're, they're not as. I've been around several of those and Jim, my car, has two of them. We got one from Kay's last year, they brought it up to the fair and we run that around and it seemed like a pretty nice machine.
I don't know what Kaminga's would do with, what they'd take for an offer for something like that for the city, you know, if there'd be.
I don't know.
I don't think they won't budge.
Probably not much, cause they probably didn't give, they're probably not making too much on it, maybe they are, I don't know.
Well, you got the price of them two new ones, them seven hundreds, did Kyle give it to you?
Yeah, we had them at the last meeting.
Did we? And I don't remember what they were.
Yeah, we did.
It was after the meeting.
Oh, no, I talked to you on the phone, that's when I called you, that was a seventeen thousand, the one.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's what it was, yeah. I got it in my phone. There was three of them, I mean, when I called you that day, that's what it was, that's right, I didn't see, I talked to you.
We talked on the phone.
Twenty-four for thirteen eight, and it's got doors, soft doors, window, poly windshield, poly back, no power steering, but you know.
Don't, yeah.
And if you went to twenty-five, it's like five, yeah, five hundred dollars more. So their prices will always be there. If you, if that's what you wanna spend, if you're gonna spend ten, eleven, twelve thousand dollars, you're just supposed to spend a couple more, if, if we can afford it.
Yeah, yeah, if we can afford it and you guys wanna go that way. I was kinda trying to look under the.
Keep under the ten.
Keep it under the ten, if we could, and if we happen to find it with a cab, with a, you know, roof and, and with front and back windshield.
I know the soft doors are twenty, twenty-five hundred dollars, I think.
Could be. I, I don't know, cause I don't know one.
But that one up there's got everything but the side doors, it's got the front windshield, back windshield.
The one that you showed us, yeah, yeah.
How much was that?
Sixty-nine. Wasn't it sixty-nine or eighty, a second? That one is sixty-nine hundred dollars.
Uh, I guess it wouldn't have heat if there's no doors.
No.
Which they don't need, because once November comes around, winter time, they're gonna be in the tractor anyway.
Anyway, yeah.
Basically, December, January, February, March should be the four months that it would be sitting.
Didn't we say something about the last meeting or Derek, or somebody say something about a joint ownership?
No, that was that grant.
We would have to share it with.
With that.
Development, Cockens.
Fair board.
Fair board.
The only time the fair board would use it would be during the fair.
Was he gonna investigate that, what we could get from that?
That's what we were talking about first, about the grant, and we missed the spring one, we'd have to plan the fall, but it's kinda tied to the trails.
I see.
So. I mean, does somebody wanna look at that one? I mean, I don't know enough about them, so.
I can go up there, I gotta go back sometime, it'll be tomorrow probably, maybe.
Yeah, I don't know what to look for either.
What year is that? Did you send that to me?
Then you could at least ask them what their bottom dollar would be on it or?
I just did. And I, I went out on what they call ATV trader. And then I just looked at the locals, so. If that one's.
Is that four wheel drive or? It don't make any difference, don't need it anymore, probably didn't.
Uh, it's, I don't, it, it doesn't say.
Yeah, it don't, it is.
Wait a second, nope, nope, it doesn't say.
I'd say if it was, they'd say it.
Probably.
For a seller.
Which they don't need, like I said, if it's snowing in the weather, they're gonna be in the tractor anyway.
Nope, I don't think they need it as well.
It's another thing to go wrong.
I can't tell. From the picture of the front end, if, I don't think there's shafts there.
Actually, I wouldn't really want it to be four wheel drive, for what they would be using.
Two, two wheel drive is more than funny.
Something else to go wrong, I mean.
Okay, I'm just gonna ask this silly question. If Kevin goes and looks at this and it looks like a good machine, do you wanna buy it? Or do you wanna wait? I'm just asking a question, I don't care.
Shoot a text out and see what the bottom dollar price is and see how many.
I mean, we know where it's listed.
Days and days you get and unanimous vote.
I'll talk to Greg, I don't know if he'll be tomorrow or not.
Well, that, that's, that's fine, I'm just, I don't know if we can technically do it that way.
Oh, wow, right, yes.
Just wanna table it and wait till the April meeting there?
Might not be, there is the next question is.
Right, that's why I'm asking.
Spring coming around.
That's why I'm asking the question.
Or summer coming around, spring, summer.
Do you wanna give permission if we could get it?
For six thousand?
Or sixty-five hundred?
Charlie says it's good to go, it's good enough for me.
How many hours and set it down?
Twenty, or seven miles.
Thirty-five?
It has, it has five hundred and seventy-nine hours, it has thirty-nine hundred miles on it.
Huh?
Just thinking, five hundred hours.
So it's, it's obviously sat and did some Michael.
Yeah. Take Gary with you, he knows about it, if you don't want me.
Isn't it?
You know enough about it, probably do, or take Gary with you.
Kyle, does Carson, is Carson the one that works at Kaminga's?
Yeah.
I think he's at that one too.
Yeah, he is, he's at Monty.
And he does a lot with side by sides, Carson does.
Yeah, I know he does, that's what he says, that's what his main deal is.
That's who we usually go through.
Yeah.
Probably go tomorrow or the next day.
So do, do you wanna give permission or you wanna wait? I'm just asking a question.
Well, my vote would be to wait, see if this grant with Derek can work through, we've lasted this long without it, that's just me.
Get a lot of hours on that tractor, that's a problem, cause also he was driving around killing time.
That's the whole purpose of this, is to try to keep the hours off the tractor and put it on something that's a little more.
Cost effective.
Cost effective, yeah.
I mean, we're talking fuel, we're talking tires, we're talking a number of things that makes that more efficient than driving that tractor.
It does.
Two of them tires probably be the price of that side by side.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know what front tires cost, but they're not cheap.
Front, I think the front tires were sixteen or seventeen hundred dollars on the old one a piece.
Yeah.
And the back, the back tires are probably, but we don't wear those.
We don't wear it, I'm just saying the front ones.
The fronts of them, I think they were sixteen hundred dollars a piece last time we purchased them.
Thirty-five hundred bucks.
And then for, and then the top of that, the fuel, I mean, that side by side will go all day in a tank of fuel theoretically.
All week.
All week, yeah.
Probably around a couple weeks or more.
Yeah.
Do we know what, when the tractor's being drove around the city, where is the city truck? Is it being used or is it sitting idle somewhere? And I know every day could vary, but.
Don't know, cause don't sit there and watch, you know, obviously, you know, I'm not here to see where, what goes on every day.
And they're both legal to drive the pickup, right, the city truck?
Yep, yep.
Like if somebody's here working at the shop, the other one could be using the pickup to go survey things around town that need. Like if somebody's here working at the shop, the other one could be using the pickup to go survey things around town that need.
A lot of time in the summertime, I know Levi will take it, throw the, I mean, we've talked about this.
Mowers in the.
Mower and a meter and stuff like that, throws it in the bucket and takes it around to the different spots that he does the, you know, trims up the ditches. Around the signposts and stuff like that, so.
And you know that tractor's probably sitting there idling while he's doing that.
More than likely.
Somebody talked to him, tell him shut the damn thing off. See, James, one of the things that we're looking at here.
Talk to Rod.
The biggest.
Yeah.
That tractor would just drive and drive and drive and drive around town and they're just, they're just scoping things out, you know?
Right. So could they be doing that as a truck?
Where's the tires at? Doesn't wear the tractor out. Where's the tires at?
I don't know if the truck would be, put the, out at the lagoons or put the tower check and everything. I mean, I said, I don't know what they're doing. Are they installing meters or?
Well, that's what they're doing, they're doing. Rod's driving the truck all the time and Levi's driving the tractor.
Scoping around with what? That's all we got for vehicles.
Yeah, cause the, the, the dump truck, you know, that's not efficient to run around town either. That big horse.
I was making a motion. If we can get it bought for sixty-five or under, just go with it. As long as it's, the machines look safe and sound. Yeah.
Okay.
I'll do that too.
That's the second?
Yeah.
It's been moved and seconded. We'll take roll. Kyle?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Lee?
Yes.
And Ginger?
Nade.
Okay. All right, next one is motion to discuss and possible action approving updating the building permit. Again, the one in the packet is the one that we had Terry com- combining different things from the two that we had. The one that Ginger put on the table is one that she put together to try to make it a little easier. Both look like good permits. Uh, I think Ginger's looks a little cleaner.
Wayed out easy, I mean, simple.
Yeah.
Granted, it doesn't all fit on one side of the page, but it seems to be more of a flow. And the information that I put in this one is, I tried to get all the information from the current one we have, so.
I, I, I guess to me, I kinda like.
Let's go right down and check stuff off.
And because it has two pages on the back, they're blank, so they can put the drawings. They can choose, so.
We could even, like, on the back of this front page, do a square and then that could be, here's their lot. Fill the square in with yourself.
Yeah.
Done it down for everybody.
Sure could.
I feel like this one, there's a lot of.
It's jumbled.
Yeah.
Lot of information that people are probably, more than likely, not gonna read.
Right.
So. What you guys wanna do?
I just held out.
Oh, well, you're making a motion to go with this one? Okay, do I have a second? Lee? Okay, we'll take roll. Kyle?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Lee?
Yes.
Ginger?
Yes.
Yep, and then like I said, the only thing that I recommended is they put today's updated, today's date at the bottom of both pages, so that way we.
We can look back and keep.
We know what's correct. And then I, once you get that updated, please send me one, cause I need it for the fair.
Right now, it's updated every four years or something. Something change, you know, we don't know what the laws are, something gonna change or?
Um, I forgot to drive by this. Motion and discuss po- action, a possible fixing manhole by, with drop off by two sixteen East Jones.
That's actually gonna be taken care of.
Okay.
Rod informed me today that he sent Levi when he went to go do, he went to go somewhere. He had, uh, Levi stop and pick up materials. So he said they do have the spacers or whatever, so they'll.
Oh.
There's, he knows that there's more than just that one, so they're gonna get it fixed.
Okay.
I don't rock your truck.
That's the one I've never come down it, cause I was trimmed by the. That's what he said. I keep forgetting. Never go down by that, but.
Okay.
Scooter.
So it sounds like he's gonna get spacers and lift it and it'll get done. Okay. Motion and possible action to approve water shooter rate increase of two percent effective July first. Everybody's fun stuff.
This artist in here is the one from twenty twenty-three that increased the rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Is that correct?
That's what I found.
So then if we raise two percent off of these rates, that's what it would be starting July first, I assume.
Did I? Did I include the thing for um, theater financial?
No, you did not.
In that one? I know we looked at it a while, uh, quite a while ago, cause this was in August, that that Maggie Burger.
Mm-hmm.
Sent that email. Um. She said annually going forward on sewer utility side, um. What was? There was something in the water here to raise that, raise on that two percent going forward, increasing them every year. And that was Sherry mentioned that too. That we need to, and I just put it on there for discussion too.
That's his possible action.
Do we have to do this? Raise this up?
We wanna stay financially solid on the water and the sewer portion. I recommend it. I, I don't know where the bottom lines are. I haven't seen those numbers for a while.
We just can't, you're talking two percent every year?
Yeah, but everything else also goes up.
Water, there's, or there's sewer, there's water.
I don't think we're any higher than a lot of people. What's that? We're not any higher than a lot of people.
Chemicals still keep going up.
That don't make it right though, Charlie.
Ele- electricity still keeps going up. Let's see. So the revenues, rep, okay, so this was when she did this.
There's a chart in there too.
When did she do this? When was this?
That was in August.
In August.
August to twenty-four.
Okay, so. Revenues exceeded the expenses, but in twenty-three and projected in twenty-four, we did not, uh, meet the. Uh, the hundred and ten percent that we're supposed to be putting away that's required by our SRF loan.
Why?
Because we had been, we, we did not get enough revenue to put away our savings.
Did we have more than unusual expenses for that time period?
I don't think so. I don't think we did, Lee. Um, we haven't had a big expense on either side for quite a while. But I know.
Kyle, which resolution or ordinance are you looking at? Are you looking at four forty-three or four forty-five?
Four forty-three right now.
But anyway, so.
Yeah, I was, yeah.
Uh. So she goes on here to state that they have not done annual reviews on the older loans. But the newer loans, they do a five-year checkup, which I'm assuming the, the one for the wastewater plant, they will do a checkup on that loan. They just won't be worried about the one on the well, that we drilled the well and did Green Street. And they're, they're insisting that we do the, to have that ten percent of our expenses put away.
And I know, uh, one ordinance, four forty-five, number three on that one, it says future rates. The monthly per gallon rate set out in ninety-nine point oh-two shall be adjusted annually as follows. On July first, twenty twenty-four, all sewer rates shall be increased two percents, two percent over the rates established in subsection one and two of this section. Which rates will take effect until June thirtieth? And then it says on each day, July first thereafter, said sewer rate shall be increased by two percent over the race in the effect during the preceding year. And here's the water one, ordinance four forty-three says the same thing.
To me, that makes it sound indefinite, like every year if we, according to this, every year we should be raising it two percent no matter what.
Yeah, because that was the recommendation that was put forth through us by those. Cause we weren't meeting the, um.
Can you say the SFR?
One-ten, S, SR, uh, the SRF requirements.
I mean, would we still make it money or staying ahead of?
Yes, the, the money is staying there. We are, we're ahead. The revenues are exceeding the expenses on both, but we, the sewer side, we have not met. The hundred and ten percent.
What would happen if we went every other year on the two percent?
I can't tell you that.
I mean.
Now, the only thing, the only thing that looking at this. It says that the water. The water is actually fine, so if you wanted to knock the wa- if you didn't wanna raise the water this time, we could do that.
Is there any penalty to us with our loans if we don't do these increases?
That, I don't know for surely.
Cause I thought one time the USDA was somebody who's slapping our wrist for not raising it.
The state revolving fund people. One of the, one of the discussions that we had in the past was the fact that if we didn't. Follow their guidelines and have that extra sitting there, that the next time we went for an SRF loan. For something, that we probably wouldn't get it because we didn't follow their recommendations. So.
And to have that money sitting in that result revolving fund, does that, does that layer guarantee in case the city goes belly up? They're gonna get their money to pay off?
No, no, no. That basically what that is there is so to try to mitigate a disaster. So it's, it's basically, it's reserved. And all it is, 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 is you're supposed to build a reserve so you can spend or you have money to pay for some of the expenses.
Like a dike blowout or something, huh?
Yes, something, ca- you know, let's say the water tower got, took out by a tornado. Just for example.
Put that out there.
I, I'm just using that as an example. So then we have money sitting there to help. Get that back established because we have a savings builder. The biggest thing that they're wanting us to do is build a savings for disasters. And not rely on, you know, handouts all the time, so to speak. Cause we have. We have two SRF loans for sure. That we have, that we're paying on. Maybe there's one on the water side, one on the wastewater side.
They're gonna be there for a while.
Yes, um.
I think Sherry told us last time, it was like twenty thirty something?
Fifty-two?
Oh, fifty.
Fifty-two is the wastewater plant, I believe. But thirty, thirty-two, cause it was what, two thousand and. Six, seven, eight, when Green Street and the well was dug. So, so it's like a twenty.
Yeah.
That's a twenty to twenty-five year loan for that, and then once that's paid off, you know?
So we got about twenty left on the water, eighteen or so left on one and twenty-five on the other, give or take.
No, no, we should have.
Or no, sorry.
We have less than fifteen on.
Less than fifteen and then twenty-five or so on the other.
On the other.
Do we have the ability, without understanding how all these funds work? Do we have the ability to, to pick one of those loans, like one of the smaller ones and pay, pay ahead on it?
No. They won't let you pay ahead.
They won't?
No. It, it's different because they're also all, they're all low interest, you know, the interest rates that we got. Because I believe Wyoming is considered a disadvantaged community, so we got less than two percent. Maybe even less than one percent. I think the wa- I think the water now, or the wastewater was over one. And the other one's probably one point two or one point three. Basically, it's just a management fee is all it is. So we're basically paying dollar for dollar on the money back.
Did they ever come up with a solution on, uh, smell of the water?
They, they do have some recommendations, yes.
When they gonna work on that?
Uh, Cahoy is gonna give us a quote. So what, we're getting off topic here, but it kinda falls into this. Since the water has some money in the reserves for that, what the company that did the testing. Of the water is recommending that we lower the pump five hundred feet in the aquifer. And get to a, a different part of the aquifer to, cause they feel that there's probably better water down deeper. It's, it's a big, long fifteen and twenty page report that we, that showed up this week. The Mike from Cahoy that did the testing, he sent it to Rod and he sent it to myself and it took me, there's a lot of stuff that's above my head. So. But anyway, the reserves that we have in the water side, if, if that's what we wanna do, which I'm gonna recommend, we lower that pump down. So we can try to get better water out of it and then we can use that new well.
How far down more did they say?
Five hundred feet, five hundred ninety-three feet.
Deeper?
Deeper.
Okay.
Cause it's, the pump right now is like three hundred, the well is sixteen or eighteen hundred feet. And they want us to get deeper into the aquifer to try to get better water. Because in the top side is where you have a lot more of your stuff that causes, uh, smell and stuff like that. So. But anyway, like I said, looking at this report, and like I said, if you guys wa- wanted to, you could conceivably. Cause I think we did that last year, is we, we didn't raise the water, we just raised the sewer, to make sure that, to try to help us.
Yeah, we did. That's what we did, yeah.
And I would say, I believe Sherry said she suggested that you raise both of them two percent.
Did she this time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, see, I hadn't talked to her, so.
I don't like the idea that we feel like we need to raise these rates, although I can see where we should. Cause we don't wanna get caught in an emergency situation and be.
That's happened thirty years ago when they weren't, but in the same thing.
It looks like it's gonna raise my bill about ten dollars.
So on one hand, we're talking about raising the rates and I know that's infrastructure, but then on the other hand, we're buying a new tractor and a side by side and everything else.
But we're using other funds for that.
Right.
But your public doesn't always understand that.
I know they don't. I know they don't.
They're like, gosh, you raised the rates. Did you really need such and such? I guess I'd rather have dependable water system and sewer system and ensure that it's gonna be here for a long term, so. I don't wanna pay it, but I will. Is this something that we could ponder over and then put it on the April agenda? And they won't meeting, everybody comes in with ideas.
Me and Chris would take effect until July first anyway, so, I mean, I just threw it out here just for discussion, so it gives everybody time to think.
Yeah, cause right now the ordinance states that every year that will be raised two percent. So, it's basically if you decide to. Knock one down.
Because I think it was supposed to be raised July first this last year and I, it wasn't.
I think it was delayed because of something.
But we can't just raise it as needed now.
We've, we've skipped quite, we have skipped a few times throughout, since I've been on the council.
Yeah, we skipped one or the other, you know, we have, we've never done them both.
Yeah.
Been nuts making all their name every.
But I'm with Ginger. I don't like the sound that making it sound like.
You're locked in every year.
In perpetuity, you know? I just, I don't like the sound of that at all. I like to have the option.
Could I make a motion to table it?
We don't have to do anything.
Okay.
Don't have to do anything. Okay, moving on down to, uh, motion discuss, motion and possible action. Approve the Midland Avenue building city for twenty-six. For eight thousand dollars.
It's the same thing every year, I think, isn't it?
I think that's what we're hearing too.
Yeah, this and the fire department's the same.
I think so, yes.
I know that, I was gonna say, I know the ambulance one, we were waiting because.
They had to get their expenses.
They never gave us a budget.
Right.
Yeah, and the budget is now in the bag.
And this eight thousand dollars is for fiscal year twenty twenty-six?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So technically, technically, we don't have to pay it till.
They do their own insurance every.
Till July.
Yeah, we won't, I just wanted to throw it out there.
So number eight and ten are kind of.
They have the same one.
Yeah, you, I just put it on there as a discussion, and then if you don't wanna do anything with it right now, then, but if we do, then I have to do a resolution for it, so.
Gotcha.
It was easier to do it all in one shot than.
I'll make a motion, we pay the eight thousand for the midland.
Next fiscal year.
Right.
Next fiscal year.
Twenty-six.
Do I have a second? Kevin? Take roll, Kyle?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Lee?
Yeah.
Ginger?
Yes.
Resolution to approve additions to the building permit.
Which Kyle and Lee did do that?
Okay, yeah, well, you put it in, when you put it in here is mo- motion to discuss and possible action, that means then you can do it.
You can do it?
If you put action.
I was trying to go off of past ones, and I'm like, yeah, okay, so then nine and ten are already.
Taken care of.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody got anything else?
On the next agenda, do you want me to then add the, um, water sewer rates for April, or do you want me to wait till May?
You might as well wait till May, because you're gonna be doing your updates here in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
So that gives everybody time to digest and.
Yeah.
Look at it, knowing that automatically it's going to increase, so if you decide, we'll have to pass a resolution to. Abstain for a year, if that makes sense. Motion to adjourn? Kyle, do I have a second? Lee, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. We'll go from this one to the next one.